So we'll go ahead and open the meeting of the North Hampton Zoning Board of Appeals. Notice of this hearing was published on April 28th and May 5th. We have one item on the agenda. I'm David Bloomberg. Members of the board joining me are Sarah Northrup and Elizabeth Silver and Maureen Scanlon as associate member and Carolyn Nish is here from the city Office of Planning Sustainability, providing staff support to the board. We always start by opening the meeting to public comment unrelated to the application that's on the agenda for tonight. So Carolyn, we don't see any other members of the public other than the applicant.
No.
Okay, so seeing none, we'll go ahead to the hearing on the request for a finding to expand a pre-existing non-conforming setback for Historic North Hampton at 66 Bridge Street, North Hampton, MAP ID 32A-176. And we'll ask the applicant or the representative of the applicant to introduce him or herself with name and address, and that would go for anyone else addressing the board. And we'll hear a brief summary of the application, and then the board will have a chance to ask the applicant questions about the application. And then if there's anyone from the public who would like to address the board regarding the application, they will have a chance to do so after the board members ask their questions. And then we may close the public hearing and we may vote on the request for the finding at the end of the hearing. So I'll ask if we could allow, or you already did allow the applicant or the representative of the applicant to speak to us. And if you could start by just giving us your name and address, please.
Well, hello, everyone. I'm Lori Sanders. I'm one of the two co-directors at Historic North Hampton. And at the moment, I'm at 46 Bridge Street, which is one of our main, does our main administrative building. So thank you all so much. I happen to be on the zoning board of appeals in West Hampton, which is where I live. So we just had our meeting on Tuesday, but we don't have a, we don't have this procedure for a finding. So I'm intrigued by, by the possibility of of including it. So I did prepare a short presentation. So I don't know, Carolyn, if I can share a screen, but if so, if that's okay with the board, I'll just.
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay, can you see that?
Yes.
All right, well, I, I'm not sure how many of you are familiar with our property, but we own three parcels that are our central campus, 46, which is the yellow house close to Baker's Pen and across the street from the post office, more or less. 58, which is the so-called Parsons House, which was built in 1719. And then 66 Bridge Street, which is the Shepherd House, which was built in 1796 and sometime in the 1800s, this building was moved to the rear location. This is the Shepherd Barn, so-called Shepherd Barn. It dates to 1805. And we see it here for the first time. It was moved here at some point in the, in the 1800s. We're not sure exactly when, but it appears on the 1853 map. So we, it's been here a while is the point. So, and over the last several years, there's been tremendous support from the CPA funding, which has enabled us to learn lots of things about the history of the barn. And, and to really come up with a plan for what it should be next. And so our, our plan includes there's some serious restoration issues. The sill is basically gone. So over the course of this summer, we will be installing a foundation, a concrete floor and replacing an L. And also, we hope to add this shed style addition on the rear, which is the subject of this hearing. So the, the project itself, the, the request in front of you tonight is for, because where the arrow is showing, this is the, the close-up of the shed style addition on the rear of the, of the barn. I'll show you a kind of a plan view in a moment. But the barn sits very close to the property line. And so it's a five-foot setback in our zoning area and the total square acreage area, rather, this total square footage that would be within that five-foot setback is just under four and a half, four and a half square feet. So, and it's right near a very large, an eight-foot wooden fence on one side and a parking lot and the chain link fence by the Bridge Street School on the other. So here's our three properties. 66 Bridge Street is right here. The little item in blue is an existing garden shed. Here's the barn as it stands now. This, and this is what we're proposing to do. So you see the garden shed and the original barn, and we're posing to add a larger patio and then the barn style addition on the rear, which is close to where the garden shed is. And the garden shed is going to go away and be relocated. So as I mentioned, in the last couple of years, more than 600 artifacts and other items were removed from the barn this past fall. The interior elements were removed because our purpose for the barn is, it will be, have really three functions. It will act as an ancillary gallery for us. So some of the large signs that we have as well as farm implements that really, really tell the story of 300 years of North Hampton's history will be on display and they'll be dramatically lit. And it's a, it's a timber frame building. So I don't think any of you have been inside the barn, but it's, it's a really terrific space and it has a lot of history in and of itself in addition to these artifacts. So part of it will be ancillary exhibit space for us. It'll also function as a community gathering space. We'll have two ADA bathrooms and a small kitchenette that will be able to close off in the front. So if there are community events, whether they're things that we're sponsoring or something that the Ward Three Association or Bridge Street School, the, the people will have, we can provide access to ADA bathrooms and everything will be fully 100% accessible. So in this, in this drawing, you see kind of two views. Here's the L, the existing L, which is you see here in an older photograph. This is currently what it looks like. This is where the two bathrooms and kitchenette will be. And then this is on the rear, this is the shed style addition in, but which is the focus of this application. And that space will be used for two functions. It will enable us to store things like all the chairs and the AV equipment and theater equipment on one side. And on the other side will be a space, a, a green room for artists and musicians and spoken word, and it will really be a, a space dedicated for, for that use. And, and the barn is small. It's, it's sort of basically 30 by 40. So our, it will be a small intimate space with a maximum capacity of 50 people. So here, here is the whole kind of bells and whistles. The, here's the core of the barn, the L where the two bathrooms would be here and here, the little kitchenette. And then here's, here's the shed style addition out, out back. And then this is the area of encroachment. And so the, the barn, when it was moved here sometime in the 1800s, was, was plunked pretty much smack, very close to smack dab on the property line with 82 Bridge Street. And at, at that point, 82 was the parsonage for the city of North Hampton. So right, right here, we are, right here, we're a foot off, a little more than a foot off the property line. And back here, we're three and a half feet off the property line. So here's a close-up. This shed style addition, like the L, which will be reconstructed, will be a new timber frame space. And here's, here's the property line. And the three and a half, a little extra, three and five and a quarter. And then, so we'll be in this area by one, one foot six and three quarters, and then this two foot seven inches. And then after this corner pen, the property opens up and we're no longer in non-compliance. And we, we explored, so yeah, here, here are the distances and for, for, for that square footage. And so we, we explored options once we knew that we would be within this five-foot setback. And we went through a series of, you know, questions in terms of making modifications to that shed style addition. And one was to have, right now, there's an existing sliding door in the barn. And that will be restored. And it turns out that the length of the shed style addition on that side of the building is exactly what we need. And so we could have swing doors, but then that would compromise ADA issues and moving in and out of those two spaces in the shed style addition, the green room and the storage area. And it would, one of our goals, yes, it's a reuse, but preserving that historic door is a, is a priority for us. The other thing is we thought, okay, well, we could have, we could change the sliding door and make it a three-quarter sliding door and then have a, a person door that would open in the other direction. But again, you know, there's the historic piece and then it complicates the construction. It makes pocket doors on both sides. It, it's just more complicated. And then finally, there's, there was like, well, we could move the shed. We could change the dimensions of this shed style addition and kind of cut in that two foot, that, that distance. And then rather, it's not supposed to say two foot, six inches, supposed to say one foot, six inches, and then go back, then go back out. But I, I think you can see that that would really complicate, complicate things and make it more expensive for the foundation. And it, it's, it's hard to see what, what, I mean, we would be in compliance, but it's hopefully, since the criterion is not detrimental to the neighborhood and as a pre-existing non-conforming structure. So this is, this is our, this is our property here, 66. To, to tell you the truth, this, these lot lines is, are not, are not accurate. The, the lot line is a little bit further in our direction as you, here's the edge of the barn. So this is that shed, garden shed, the barn. And so this is the, where the shed, the new shed would be. And then just a little bit closer look is, it would be, be right here. This, this shows you, one of the things I wanted to show in this is, this is the parking lot for, behind the Bridge Street School that has this chain link fence. And then this piece right here is this eight-foot fence owned by our neighbor, our neighbor here at 74 Bridge Street. I think in my document, I say 82, but it's supposed to say 74. And I did get a message from Todd Marchewka tonight, who he said, mention my name. They know me there. And he is in full support of our project. And we've also heard from one of the residents at this building. And then similarly, we heard, I think you received a letter, Carolyn, from Quaverly Rothenberg, who lives on Graves and is also in support of the project. So I hope, I hope if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
I have no questions. That's one of the best presentations I've seen, even from my assistant engineer. Well, thank you. Explained it quite nicely and delineated it precisely.
Any other comments or questions?
Just, just to confirm that the, that we did get the letter from Quaverly Rothenberg. So yeah, we have that. Thanks. Sorry, Maureen.
No.
Fighting with my microphone.
Any, any advanced questions? I think we're clarified in your presentation. I really appreciate the thoroughness of it.
Oh, well, thank you so much.
Yeah, I, I agree. Thank you. Excellent presentation. And phenomenal cause, in my personal opinion. I mean, I just, this is so exciting to the restoration of this historically significant barn. And I agree completely that it would be an absurdity to, to have to do backflips to, to configure the structure in such a way to avoid this negligible encroachment, in, in my opinion. Are we ready to have a motion to close the public hearing? And once that's approved, we cannot have any more input from the applicant. Oh, Carolyn.
I do see somebody else on.
I was gonna say, is there a member of the public present?
Carolyn, you're muted. You're muted, Carolyn.
Nobody wants to, no one's raising their hand. Okay, so you're good.
The motion to close the meeting.
Okay, second.
Second.
And a roll call, since we're virtual, please, Carolyn.
Elizabeth Silver?
Yes.
Sarah Northrup?
Yes.
And David Bloomberg.
Yes. And now a motion, do we have a motion on the request for the finding?
I'll move that we grant the finding as presented.
Second.
Okay. And for discussion, I just want to point out, I think what we are all thinking, but haven't explicitly stated, and that is, speaking for myself, this, to me, this presentation or this proposal in terms of the alteration or expansion of a pre-existing non-conforming structure, to me, is clearly not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. And that is the, the standard, as the applicant mentioned, that we apply in determining if we're going to grant a finding. So with that said, I guess, Carolyn, could we have a, a roll call vote on the motion to grant the request for the finding?
Yep. Sarah Northrup?
Yes.
Elizabeth Silver?
Yes.
And David Bloomberg.
Yes, that's unanimous. Congratulations.
Yes, we're very excited about this. So thank you for doing it.
We are. We'll all benefit. Thank you.
Well, we're really, we're really, really excited. Thank you so much. And so this good news caps more good news that we received today, which is we just got notification from the Massachusetts Cultural Council that we received $106,000 award. So we are three for three in three weeks. $173,000 from the CPA, which has been our biggest source of support. We received $40,000 from the Beverage Family Foundation and today. So these are, these are three grants that we wrote in like three weeks, basically, in, in January, and they've all come in. And, and this is great. So thank you. I just have a question with a finding, is there an appeal period time?
Yes. Yeah.
Yeah, it's 20 days after the decision sent to the clerk. I'll let you know as soon as I get it there and that it'll have the date on the appeal and then you can pick it up.
And is that something we record at the registry?
Yep.
Great.
Just, just like other permits.
Great. Well, thank you all so much. As a, as a fellow ZBA person, I, I understand some of the, what happens for you.
Kudos to you for carrying that mantle.
Thank you.
Thank you all so much. Have a good night. All right.
Thanks. I don't think we have any minutes. So is, is, is there any other business for?
We've got those bylaws.
So there's two things. Yeah, the bylaws, which Maureen sent me some edits that were great, very detailed, in the weeds comments that, you know, it's great to have another set of eyes on those. And so I've made changes. I didn't have a chance. I'm sorry to send you those. They were grammatical changes, typos, and then, you know, clarifications, basically. So if you want another round to look at it based on Maureen's changes, I'd be happy to send those out to you. We can do it next time. We don't have a meeting on the 26th of May. I think I may have relayed that to you. So the next possible meeting would be June 9th. And again, there's no real hurry for this. So it's not like, you know, you have to do it by time. Certainly, just want to wrap it up.
I did go through them, Carolyn, and I had a couple of quick things. So is it all right to raise them now? Or do you not want me to?
No, I can, I have it on the screen here, just in case you wanted to discuss.
Oh, yeah. Okay. There are two very, very little things. One is in section 1.6, number seven. It talked about postponing hearings and it said, as long as it's done by, to a date certain. I know that we have continued things without date certain in the past. So I was just a little curious about that language.
So first, let me say, Maureen pointed to that section precisely to ask about clarifying the language because it was a little confusing. So I did reword it. Rarely do you not continue to a specific date and time.
That's right. But we, there have been times.
When that happens, we're obligated to mail out new notice. That's all that means.
Okay.
Is that if you, if you continue to a certain day and time, then that's considered procedurally the appropriate public notice. If you don't, then the onus is on the city to re-notify all the abutters and also repost it in the Gazette.
Okay.
Ah, should that be explicitly stated then as an alternative procedure to stating a time, place and date certain? Because this would imply that we're not supposed to do that, even though in practice, I guess we have that alternative procedure.
I can add that and add it to the list of changes to resend to you.
Yeah, I think it makes sense. In fact, that is an option available to us because this language suggests that we can't do that. And it says, we can only postpone or continue to a time, but date certain.
Yeah.
Say we can vote?
Yeah, it says make vote to close, postpone or continue, but.
Close, can we vote on the application?
Um, so actually, I need to reword all of this because it's trying to merge everything into one. So at any point, you can either close the hearing, postpone it or continue it. So you're obviously not going to put a specific time and place if you're closing the hearing. So I think I might break this up into two points anyway.
Okay.
Um, so I'll, I'll do, I'll rework that and send it. So I appreciate that.
And then.
Close evaluation.
Yeah, then the, the one other little thing was in, I think it's section 1.11, it referred to a vice chair. Do we have a vice chair?
Sarah.
Oh, okay. Technically, I'm the longest term. But.
No, good to know.
Yeah, so David and I have traded places a couple of times, but I'm, I'm not tied to any title.
We can also do another vote. I mean, usually the boards do it every year. This has been, you know, the last two years.
We don't need another vote. No, we're, we're good. Really. I didn't want to stir up anything. I was just curious.
I'm happy to step down.
I sense a coup coming.
It's okay. I will welcome it.
Don't, you heard nothing, David.
Repose me.
I'm also willing to continue to serve.
I had a question on section 1.4. It refers to, let's see, amendment shall have been proposed at a regular meeting immediately preceding that during which a vote is taken. So immediate, and then me, an immediate, a meeting that was immediately proceeding or the amendment, the proposal has to be within the same meeting immediately proceeding.
What section are you in, Sarah?
1.4.
It's for amendments and adopting these bylaws. So it, it's supposed to be, well, I think the way that it would read is you review them at one meeting and the very next meeting is when you take the vote.
So what immediately made me think it was during the same meeting?
Oh, it's supposed to go to proceeding, immediately proceeding that during, which, oh, so meaning it's the, and I can clarify that too.
So it might be more clarified if you changed the word of before regular to the. I mean, that might clarify. Regular meeting, yes. Rather than any old regular meeting. And by regular, we mean public?
Yes, it has to be posted on, yes. It, it has to be a meeting that's posted.
Welcome to a bunch of lawyers, Carolyn.
I'm used to it. Okay.
Does that suggest, the suggestion I heard makes sense that proposed at the regular meeting immediately proceeding instead of a regular meeting?
I don't know if it clarifies it more, but it's.
I'm suggesting it does, but go ahead.
Okay. I mean, I had a, I had a question about that section that was just simply to make sure whatever we were saying made it clear that the public would be notified that we were about to consider amending our bylaws. So as long as regular means it's a posted meeting, which it does, it means the public, you know, they're not notified about this, but they have the opportunity to find out that we will be potentially amending our bylaws.
Well, they're notified through the agenda. If they look at the agenda, it will be on it.
Right.
Right. It has to be on the agenda. Yep.
It's, it's pull, it's not push in terms of communications. It's not like people have to go looking for this. So I had a, I had a question about that, just in fact, in terms of what level of say do we have about changing these without the public having an opportunity to know that they might change in a way that impacts the community? In their opinion, yeah.
Right.
Well, I think Carolyn said it would be on the agenda. So that is public notice, right?
It is public notice. Yeah.
And also, I kind of feel, I'm gonna make a joke here. I feel sorry for anyone who's, who whose life is so sad. They want to get in, they want to argue, but, but now I'm wasting our time. So, um, but, but it is, it is published, right? So people do have, technically, there is public notice.
Yep.
It could be that the message that I, what I had, what was coming to mind was the parallel notice Carolyn shared with us about the new committee looking into maybe opportunities for more of the public to participate on boards that I think it's very valuable for us to all keep that in mind, to make sure that there is this subcommittee that two city councilors, I believe, have brought forward or started crafting that provides, that, that just looks at the ways the wider community can be involved in boards and committees on a city level. Right. Just because I've been willing to volunteer for whatever it's been, 23 years or something, doesn't mean that I won't, you know, get out of the way and let someone else do it. But there just seems to be a chronic shortage of people willing to volunteer.
And I think that's sort of the, the city council is trying to figure out a way to expand the pool, right? So.
Okay, one more question on this on your draft. Section 1.13, employment of outside consultants. It lists zoning, planning and conservation commissions might hire outside consultants. Would that also apply to architecture, history, historical, excuse me, or any board? Or just these three boards?
Um, it's just, well, at this point, it's just these, it could be any board really, but that's typically what. But um that's typically what happens. Historical commission, they can contract, they, you know, they spend money and they're high, they just hired a consultant to help them do a plan. But it's really about the permitting hat, um if there's additional technicals.
Okay, and uh my last question, then it later in that paragraph, it then lists the Mass General Law section. Does the list then review fee may be imposed only if one through eight uh at Sarah? Is that basically just straight out of the Mass General Law? That's those bullets, one through eight, and then.
Yeah. Yeah.
You you could just cite it if you wanted.
Yeah, I think it's clearer, though, so people, especially applicants.
That's true.
You've adopted this.
Yeah.
Yep.
So was there going to be uh additional sections for other boards? But uh there's a section three for zoning, section two for planning.
Right, so the only other two would be central business architecture. And we do that, we would do that separately in historical commission. But they have sim- they have different sort of procedures. Okay. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So you'll recirculate and then make, and we've now procedurally, we can vote at the next uh meeting?
Right.
And 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 I just want to make sure I had that date in my calendar, Carolyn, for in June, the June meeting.
June ninth. Um I don't know that yeah, remember if we have a permit yet. Oh, I think we are gonna have a permit for that, but it'd be June ninth.
Okay, thank you.
I can tell you now, I won't be here for the June twenty-third meeting, if there is one.
Um and I'm gonna try to hold that off anyway because I'm not gonna be here.
Okay.
But I could potentially do it by June. We had.
Yeah, I won't be able to. Um so it, did we come up with dates for July and August?
So it looks like July twenty-eighth was a winner and potentially, I'm sorry, July seven, or twenty-eight and August twenty-fifth had more people. So we had three for the twenty-eighth, and then I didn't see anything back from you, David, so I didn't know if any of those dates worked.
Uh the twenty-eighth, if all goes well, I'm gonna be in London with my daughter for the first time in two and a half years. And um.
We have three people for the twenty-eighth, so.
Okay, and then what was the August date?
Twenty-fifth.
That should be fine. I'm gonna pencil it in. That should be fine.
Okay.
Are we um obligated to meet on the, one of the Thursdays that we normally would be meeting?
No, you can meet another time. You can meet anytime you want.
Yeah, it's just. In August, I'm available two of the weeks that we wouldn't normally meet. And the two weeks that we would normally meet, I'm not available, so.
Well, we can also play it by ear, and if nothing's coming in and there's no meeting, then we won't reschedule. Um and then if there is, of course, you can just decide that you want to meet a different day. Okay.
So for the moment, we have a day, one day in June, we have one day in July, and one day in August. And that could over us, okay. And you've got your, you know, required three for each of those.
Yes.
Okay, motion to adjourn?
Second.
Okay, and roll call, please?
Uh Elizabeth Silver?
Yes.
Uh Sarah Norther?
Yes.
David Bloomberg.
Yes, that's unanimous. Thank you, everybody.
Happy spring.
Thank you.
Take care.